When I first met Mike, learned about the Detroit connection.
Peyton Saunders.
How long do we have zoomed in?
He told me the story of a single mom.
Who all do we have zoomed in already?
She didn't.
Do we have anybody that's zooming in already?
Yeah, you have Jimmy Smythe with Methaline Smythe LLC.
Okay, we need Ben to give us all of our council members and Shannon to get here.
Peyton Parker's here.
Hi Peyton.
So we need one more for the quorum, is that what you're saying?
One, two, three.
Peyton's.
Four. We gotta have five.
Yeah, we gotta have one more. And there she is.
There she is. We have five.
Anyway, he told me the story of, as a little boy, that travels up through St. Louis.
Are you, I think you're, if you want to sit over there, no, you can sit right down here on the end if you want to.
The story of just trying to make it go with his mom and single income and all that.
Sir, could you find a seat, please? We're trying to.
And he did.
Okay.
Boy, it was powerful. Just to listen to him one-on-one. Mayor? It was really a great story for the governor to come and tell him how education was that one neutral thing in his life that could really help him, and it did.
I don't know about you, but he's coming around. He's the only other one.
Our stories.
What's he doing these days? Do you know? I know he plays a lot of golf in Little Rock.
Playing with his grandkids, all that other stuff.
Yeah, I think he's a member down at Chanel.
I have no idea.
Yeah, good for him.
I think I probably am. Let me see if I do.
Good for him.
Do we get a new clock?
Yeah. Got it. Uh, now, wait, wait, wait. Let's see. 841-6237? That's it. I got it. Okay, now I need to write myself a note to call Tom. Maybe. I'll put it on my tomorrow's agenda.
Is this on the corner?
Yeah, it's for sale. Or, no, there's a, it's up tonight. That's why you're.
Yeah, well, you know, I didn't read the sign.
I got a better chance of remembering. Not necessarily a good chance, but a better chance. The easiest way to get me is to send me an email.
Very good at that.
Oh, he's not very good at that either? Okay.
Does it, but he's not very good at it.
I could say a text, and I wouldn't even go that far then.
He does text, but not very. He doesn't do that very well either.
Despite the system, is that what you're telling me?
He also doesn't type, because he says his finger.
Ah, he's been saying that for years. Yes, for years. That is not something I remember hearing that one a long time. Is he working? Is he mostly retired?
Debbie, what time do you have?
He's still working, but yeah, he's still on a cutback.
Hey Deb, what time do you have on your phone?
Issues from all his football, all of his football years.
It was this box back a little bit.
Does he have issues from that?
Wait on that, or if we can just go ahead and go.
You know, he has, like, aches and pains. Other than that, nothing.
We'll fix it after. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Oh, I know he did. That's why I asked, you know. Like, Jim, when's it ending? Oh, gosh. It's really scary.
And Dr. Tyler, myself, we've got five, and then we don't know whether James David's gonna show up, or Ben Peters was supposed to be.
I'm here.
Ben Peters is online. Thank you, Ben.
Normally there are, but I don't know where they're at. I'm just letting the mayor look at my copy.
We're after.
I hear voices out.
Okay, okay.
We're after five if you're ready to start.
I'm ready. Let's do it. We're ready. Can we help you with something?
There should be some right over there.
There should be some extra.
Behind that woman in the blue coat. Left them on the table.
Yeah, there should be some over there.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if you're ready, we're gonna get started with the July 2nd, 2020 Chamber of Counsel. If you would, join me in the pledge, and then Mr. Tyler will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you that you brought us here safely tonight. We pray for the safe travels back home for everyone. We're grateful for the community you allow us to live in and all the blessings that you've given us. We ask you to guide us, make the wise decisions tonight, what's best for this community. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, if there isn't anything else, we'll go ahead and call the order.
Howard Austin. What am I?
Do that one.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
James David. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Peyton.
Hello Peyton. Oh, well, he's here.
He's here, we see him.
Kevin Parsley. Ben Peters.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
All right, first order of business is approval of the minutes for the June 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Is that Peyton that motion?
No, that's Dr.
That was Dr. Compton.
Oh, Dr. Okay, sorry. Okay.
All right.
This is a call for the vote, or is a voice vote, rather than a roll call on the minutes.
Okay.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. All right. Next, we move to the amendment to the Code of Ordinance by Patsy Christie.
What we're proposing tonight is amendment to Chapter 130, Article 6, which is the mobile vending requirements in the city, and what we are proposing, as we talked about quite some time ago, when we were working on the downtown form-based code and the downtown master plan, that the way the downtown is handled is a little bit differently, and what we're proposing in this amendment is to exempt mobile vending in the downtown form-based code district that's outlined on the official zoning map, that's in the downtown master plan as well, so that those do not have to go through the same process as the ones outside the downtown area. What will happen with these, they will have to submit an application to the downtown Springdale Alliance Events Committee, which is part of the city's contract with downtown alliance to control events downtown, and submit their application to them, and it would have to be approved at that location. They don't have to be set up for a permanent amount of time. We've got some possibilities of vendors that may want to set up for a week or two, which is longer than what you can do in the others, and rather than going through that long process every time, it would allow it to be, go through the events committee, and so that's the proposed amendment to that section of the code. This is a public hearing. If we have any comments or questions.
Any comments from the audience? All right, to the committee, any comments?
Now, what we would be looking for is a motion to recommend this to the city council, and it would go to the council at the next council meeting, which is next Tuesday night.
Motion to send to city council.
With a recommendation for approval?
With a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Ms. Mueller.
Second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
You forgot. James came in.
Sorry. James David.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ordinance passes 6-0 to move forward to council.
It's actually seven, right?
Is it seven now?
It was one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, seven.
Seven, sorry, seven. All right, let's move on to tabled items. R20-19 Mansia Properties LLC, 601 North Thompson, presented by Willner. Please forgive me if I say this incorrectly, Dubon.
You said it right, actually.
All right.
Yeah, so we have a property that we are working with David Mansia for, and my name is Willner Dubon, by the way, with Botai Architecture, and we are proposing to change the zoning from a C6 to a C5 here in order to be able to put a ground-up retail street mall.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Currently, there is a small car sales building there, so obviously that's gonna be torn down, and that's the reason why we're asking for the rezon.
Okay, planning?
A C6 zone limits it to automotive sales and services, and you want to expand it to more retail and uses of that property. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial developments for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
All right, comments from the audience?
Need to see if we have anybody online that wants to comment.
Anyone online that have any comments?
Do we have anybody zoomed in, other than planning commission members, that would want to comment on this? Okay, we're gonna assume no.
All right, to the committee.
Motion to approve.
This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote, motion to approve.
Call for the vote by Dr. Compton.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
All right, passes 7-0. Thank you, sir.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on July the 28th.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is B20-21 Tyson Foods, 2200 Don Tyson Parkway, presented by...
Heather Chilson. Yeah, I didn't know who was gonna present.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Heather Chilson. I'm here on behalf of Tyson Foods. I work for them and basically act as their property manager. We are asking for a variance on, to add a second monument sign in front of our property, so our visitors and guests will see our sign as they come from either the east or the west. Currently, it is right on the corner of, I don't know if you can see it, but there's a Circle Drive. It's right on the corner of the Circle Drive, so this will actually allow us to push them out, both east and west.
So the existing sign will be moved further to the west, and you'll install a new one on the east?
Actually, yeah, the existing sign will actually be just completely torn down, and we're also going to update our logo at the same time, so it'll be completely new.
Comments from planning?
We don't have any problems with this variance request.
All right.
And you can see what the sign looks like. There is a copy in your packet and the locations that they're proposing.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Comments online? To the committee? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Ms. Mueller.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Next is public hearing and rezoning, R20-21 Inez Hernandez, Anna and Antonio Batres, 734 Holcombe, presented by Inez Hernandez.
Hi. So we have a zoning...
Can you state your name and address for me, please?
Oh, Inez Hernandez, and it's 734 Holcombe Street, Miss Springdale. So right now, we have an O1 zoning, and I want to change it to a C2. If you see that second building in the back, we used to have a bakery. That's where my mother used to have it. And we wanna, I'm not gonna open a bakery anymore, but I do want to have like a little concession stand for snow cones during the summer.
And rather than just having a mobile vending at that location, you want to actually do it in the structure you already have there?
Yes.
At that location?
Yes.
The bakery operated there for several many years when that was allowed in an O1 zone, and with the revisions to the zoning ordinance, it's not allowed in an O1 anymore, so she's requesting to rezon it to C2, understanding that that makes your house a non-conforming use?
Yes.
Okay. The adopted comprehensive plan indicates medium-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. Protects the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. And if you look at the zoning map, can you, the property to the south of it has recently, or within, since you had the bakery, been rezoned to C2, so we've had some changes along that street.
Okay. Comments from the audience, either here or online? To the committee?
Call for the vote.
I was just gonna say that 811 across the streets also C2, so I think this area is probably moving that direction.
Agreed. I'm sorry, Ms. Mueller?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Ms. Mueller.
Mueller.
Yes.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 28th.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Next up is R20-22 David and Jennifer Wheeler, 1,008 West Maple, from MF12 to C2.
Good afternoon, and I'm Bill Watkins. I'm an attorney at Rogers. I appreciate you allowing me to join this via Zoom today under the circumstances. The staff report is pretty clear and doesn't leave me a lot of room to create additional comments and try to earn my fee. This request does comply or is compatible with the surroundings zoning uses. And you can see everything around it is C1 or C2, and I think the idea is for my clients to sell this property to some folks who want to probably run a hair salon out of this existing building or else build a new building, but nevertheless, the C2 zoning is compatible and seems to be appropriate. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
With the understanding that they cannot live in that structure and operate a salon, you understand that part, right?
Absolutely. They do it on intent.
Okay. Comprehensive land use plan indicates this is part of the downtown district. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and both the viability of older commercial properties as well as new commercial development. And it had a chiropractor office in it for many, many, many years, so it has had a commercial use for many years.
Any comments from the audience, either here or online? To the committee? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Dr. Compton.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Rezoning passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it goes to council on the 28th.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Next on the dock is R20-23 NWA Industrial Park LLC, from C6 to C2, presented by Blaine Erskine, Gage Edwards, Logan Huber.
That's a Greg. They all go together, right?
It's okay if you want to take your mask off, sir.
All right, great.
If you just give me your name and address, you'll be good to go.
2601 Cambridge, Greg Edwards.
Again, this was a piece of property that was zoned for automobile sales, and we're taking it from that restriction to a C2 zone that gives you more use of that piece of property rather than just strictly automotive services.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and the tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. And encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
All right, questions from the audience, either here or online? To the committee? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Ms. Mueller?
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 28th. You can bring this. Okay.
Next up is R20-24 Walter Potapov, 2501 Turner, from SF2 to MF12. Table that one, move forward. We can hold that for a little while, and this may be...
We're actually here. Come on.
Okay. Walter Potapov, anywhere in the building? I don't see him here. Patsy, do you want to go ahead and hold that one for a little while, and we'll move back to it?
Yeah, we can't hear it unless the applicant here is to present his case, so we'll have, we'll wait for a little bit and see if he shows up and come back to it.
Okay. We'll move on to R20-25 Rogue Corral, 4265 North Fortieth, from A1 to MF2, presented by Rogue Corral, or Roque Corral, excuse me. This is gonna get to go a whole lot faster. All right, R20-26 John Lopez Properties LLC, from A1 to C2, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We're requesting a portion of this property on McCray to be zoned C2. You'll answer any questions?
The entire property, Jason, did you say, or is it just a portion?
The front portion, but that's shown there on the screen.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It is a larger track that continues to that in the back, but they're just doing the front portion of the property.
Okay. Planning?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, positive aspects of approval. We got the wrong ones on this one. Did I have the wrong page? Let me go back one. I don't know where it is. I gotta go back one.
It's all right. While you're checking on that, for the folks that just came in, you don't happen to be the Roque Corral or from Walter Potapov, do you? Which one? Okay, Walter, we're gonna come to you right, we just passed you, but we're gonna come right back to you in just a minute.
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations.
All right, any questions from the audience, either here or online? To the committee? This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Ms. Mueller?
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
All right, that passes 7-0. Thank you, Jason. We're gonna move back now to R20-24 Walter, and forgive me if I mispronounced this, Potapov, talking 2501 Turner, from an SF2 to an MF12. If you would, sir, please step up to the podium right there and give us your name and address, and tell us a little bit about your request.
Walter Potapov, 2501 South Turner Street.
And you're wanting to move a property from SF2 to MF12, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium-density residential use, and MF12 is considered to be medium-density. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, appropriate locations of single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility, availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Questions from the audience who are online? Yes, ma'am, if you would, please step up to the podium right there and let us have your name and address.
Jackie Rizley, 2403 Turner Street. And my dad's over there. He actually owns it, but I was just wondering what...
Ma'am, could we, could we ask you to take your mask off and tell us one more time? It's a little hard to understand, and Debbie's trying to get all that down for the...
I need her name again.
Could we get your name and address one more time? I'm sorry.
It's okay. My name is Jackie Rizley. It's J-A-C-Q-U-E-R-I-Z-L-E-Y. And I was just wondering what, like, I know that it's gonna go to multifamily, so I'm just wondering, like, what kind of plans y'all have. I was just trying to wonder, because I've heard that y'all are wanting to do, like, apartments, but I didn't know what kind of...
Okay, let me explain to you what we're talking about. Anything that is allowed in that zone could be built, and in a MF12 zone, he can build duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, up to 12 units per acre. That's the maximum that he could do. We don't, he doesn't have to tell us today what all exactly it's gonna look like, but we know that that's the maximum of what you can do on that piece of property.
Okay, so 12 is the maximum?
And they can't be any taller than two-story.
Perfect.
All right, any other questions online or here? All right, to the committee, call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Ms. Mueller?
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
All right, your request is passed 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it goes to city council on July the 28th.
Thank you. All right, before we move on, one last call for Roque Corral. Anyone from Roque Corral here? Oh, they are here? Okay. Great. Fellas, if you would, just step up to the mic there. You're welcome to take off your mask at the mic and let us have your name and address, and tell us about your request.
Yes, sir. Rocky Corral, R-O-Q-U-E-C-O-R-R-A-L.
Forgive me for butchering that. I'm so sorry.
Wait a minute, do we have authorization for him to...
He's, he's here, isn't he?
Okay, okay. Sorry, I just gotta make sure that whoever's speaking has authorizations to do that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Address is 4265 North Fortieth. And we have the intention on building a duplex. We don't have any plans or anything, but talking it through, due to the size of the space, we wanted to go ahead and set it up for multifamily just in case we ever did want to build anything else on that property.
Okay, planning?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan. It's recommended for approval, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations of single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. The MF2 zone allows for four units per acre...
two zone allows for four units per acre, which is the same density as the, as an SF two. Right now it's zoned A one, so, you know, two duplexes or four houses are allowed per acre with an MF two zone.
Okay. Questions from the audience?
No, I think, I think we visited the committee, came out of the committee, I think we're just think I was.
Folks, if you happen, folks, if you happen to be on the Zoom. Do we know where that's coming from?
We know where that's coming from.
If you happen to be on the Zoom, folks, if you could mute your phone, we'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. If there's any questions from the audience or online about this particular request? Our, yes, sir, go right ahead, step up and let us have your name and address, please.
My name's Dale Carver, and I live at forty-one fifty-seven North Fortieth, and I'm two, two houses down from this property. My concern is about the sewer situation and the water situation. We're all on wells out there. We always have been for as long as we've lived there. We're being kind of circled with the city, with the city water, and we now got no city water. So if he's going to build these duplexes, what's going to happen with the sewer?
Well, he will have to have an approved septic system for any additional building that goes on there through the Benton County Health Department, and he will have to have an adequate water supply before he can build any other structures. And I think he's aware that there's not any water or sewer at that location now.
Yeah.
But he will have to show before.
There is, there is sewer at that location. I do know what kind of sewer is that location. My mother and dad's put that in. He built the sewer box itself and run the line straight to the creek. So that's a sewer situation now.
As in a septic system that runs the lines to the creek or part of the city of Springdale sewer system?
Well, it goes into the.
Into the creek?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I can tell you with the current situation with septic systems, that won't be allowed.
Yeah.
They will have to have sufficient area on the site itself to contain their lateral fields before septic system can be approved.
I'm saying, you know, I don't want my well ruined because we don't have city water, you know, and we're all on well there. We're kind of being circled all those gears with the city, you know.
And those, those conditions were explained to them when we talked about that, that they would have to have an adequate water supply and an approved septic system through the county health department.
I don't think we need any more septic tanks there. We got septic tanks behind us, septic tanks below us, you know.
Well, that, that is something that's regulated by the county, so they'll have to work through that, do perk tests, have all that done, and that'll have to be presented before they can get a permit to build anything at that site. Okay?
That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to add.
If you would, sir, please tell us your name and address.
Roque Corral, father of.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to make sure about our plan right now is just to build just one where the old house is to tear it down, so we're not planning at this moment to do nothing. Even the future, we build just a house for leaving us there in case, but it's not in consideration right now. It's going to be just one house on the top, but, and if we do that, we may wait until the city put the sewer and water and everything. So right now, we just plan to build just right there where the old house is, so it's going to be everything.
And if you're replacing the old house with a new structure, you will have to have a septic system approval to do that, too.
Yeah.
Because I would imagine that septic system's been there a long time, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that's not good. So, yeah, it's going to be brand-new sewer and everything, so that's the plan.
All right, any, thank you very much. Any other questions from the audience or online? All right, to the committee, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Ms. Mueller.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
All right, the request passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the, on the twenty-eighth.
Next, we'll move into public hearing conditional use, C twenty-12 Arkansas Conference Association of Seventh-day Adventists. This is for a tandem lot split presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors. Do we have anyone from Satterfield Land Surveyors either here or online?
He's on Zoom. He was. I don't know where he is.
Do we still have someone on Zoom? Do we have someone on Zoom who wants to present this from Satterfield?
All right, we'll come back to that one. Let's move on to C twenty-14 Sole De Gloria LLC, tandem lot split presented by Alan Reed. Okay?
I think Rick went to get in.
Hey, Rick. You have an Alan Reed outside? Alan Reed outside?
We want to go to the next one, come back to that.
All right. Very good. We'll move into preliminary plats, RP twenty-oh-six. This is a replat of lots one and two on Parkway Plaza, east side of Fifty-sixth, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We are kind of wrapping up the final stages of Parkway Plaza, finished, finished the roadwork and are basically splitting that lot in half and moving one lot line for lot two, and I'll answer any other questions.
Planning has no comments. Do we have somebody from engineering on Zoom or?
Yeah, Katie's here on Zoom.
Okay, do we have any issues with this replat?
No, no comments from engineering.
Okay.
All right, to the audience, any comments either here or online? All right, to the committee, this would be a motion, correct?
Subject to staff comments.
This would be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Dr. Compton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker. Parker.
Like Peyton's gone. Parker, he's coming, he's coming.
Parker.
He's shaking his head.
Yes.
Got caught.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Replant passes seven zero.
Okay, if you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by Thursday at noon.
Thank you.
All right, next up is FP twenty-oh-three cottages at the park, presented again by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple again at ESI. We're getting close on, on this one as well. Sixty lots for the cottages at the park. I'll answer any other questions.
The only comment we have from planning and engineering is that the final plat checklist needs to be submitted prior to the final signing of the, of the final plat.
Very good. Comments from the audience either here or online? Hearing none. We'll go to the committee. This is a motion. Subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Peters.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Again, if you want this to go to council next Tuesday night, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon on Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on, let's touch base again to see if we have anyone from Arkansas Conference Association of Seventh-day Adventists from the Satterfield Land Surveyors either here or online.
Alan, I just saw Alan Reed in here.
That's the next one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, we're going to table that, and we're going to move to C twenty-14 Sole. That's what we're doing right now. Sole De Gloria LLC.
Same way.
Presented by, presented by Alan Reed. Does that breach you two?
We think too much.
Yes, sir, your name and address, please.
Alan Reed, one-eighteen South College Avenue, Fayetteville, Arkansas.
Planning comments?
Okay, so this is a fifteen-acre tract that you are dividing into two tracks, creating or are you creating? One tandem lot in the back, which is track day in the, actually, we're creating three lots, right?
Yes, three lots, yes.
Is the access paved all the way to the back lot?
Yes.
It's actually pavement?
I believe it's, yeah, chip and seal, I think.
Okay, chip and seal's not pavement?
No.
Tom, is it paved?
Concrete.
Concrete.
It's concrete, okay, so we're good. Okay. That's usually the only comment that we have, we have to know that it's paved all the way through, so if it's concrete. And that's from the, the road all the way up to the track day? Because I know there's concrete by the house down on this end, but when you, when you pick it up from the, from the property lines, we have there two.
Thank you, sir.
Is it paved the rest of the way?
I believe it's all the way out to the road, yes. It's all the way up to here.
Tom Joseph Griffin Commercial Royal Estate. The concrete goes from the gate, entrance gate, up to the house. It's a concrete track road. From the actual Graham Road up to the gate.
Okay.
Is actually a, just a common.
It's hard to say because there's trees over it.
Correct.
Okay.
But from the gate, which is the neck, forward is concrete.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, no other staff comments?
Uh-uh.
All right, questions either from the audience here or online?
There's a call for the vote on the tandem lot.
All right, yes, ma'am, if you would, please come up to the podium and let us have your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Marion Michaelletto. I live at twenty-twenty-four Fisher Lane, and I'm here representing my sister who owns the property that joins their property, the Duggars' property. They're not able to get out because of COVID, so they're at high risk. I have lived there my whole life, and I, we tore my parents' house down in October two thousand nineteen, and I wanted to build a new house to replace the old one, and they, I was told that I couldn't because I didn't have enough frontage to keep it agricultural. The Duggars' only frontage is an easement, which my parents gave to Dr. and Mrs. Bennett when they bought the property. So that's their only frontage for the, for the land.
That's why they're asking for the conditional use for a tandem lot.
Right.
Which allows them to have the small frontage on the front to be able to, to build the, to create the lots in the back.
Right. I just didn't think it would be fair to bend the rules for them when you wouldn't bend the rules for me when I've lived there my whole life.
Okay, did you come in and ask for a variance for the frontage on the public road? Do you have two acres?
We have four acres.
Okay, did you come in and ask for a variance on the frontage so that you could do a house on less than two hundred feet?
Well, we wanted to keep it agricultural.
Okay.
And so we couldn't do that.
You can ask for a variance, to have a variance for the frontage along the street. How much do you have?
We have four acres.
Now, how much frontage do you have on the street?
Well, it goes from, there's two lots, there's their, their driveway, which is going up the hill, and it's, it's just gravel. It's just dirt. It's not paved. And then there's two acres, two lots, and then ours goes from, I guess, that yellow line up to Fisher Lane.
Okay.
So the two, the two houses, and then there's a shop, and then ours is the shop up to the Fisher Lane.
Okay, you have to have two acres and two hu, and two hundred foot of frontage for each structure that's on there.
Right.
And you had how many acres total?
We have four.
Okay, so you could have two houses, but you may not have two hundred foot of frontage. You could come back and ask for a variance for the frontage if you want to try that.
And to keep it agricultural?
Yes. That's the only way you could keep it agricultural and be able to build two structures if you have four acres with less than four hundred foot of frontage.
Okay, even though theirs is just an easement, their driveway is just an easement?
That's, they're asking for the conditional use for a tandem lot split, which is a different kind.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions either here or online? All right, we'll move to the committee. This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Ms. Mueller.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
This tandem lot split passes seven zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you. All right, one last time for the Arkansas Conference Association. Anyone in the House for that? All right, we're going to move past that. Now, Large-Scale Developments, L twenty- seventeen Lost Margaritas Plaza. Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
About C twenty-12. My name is Jim Cordes, C-O-R-D-E-S. My address is sixty-five thirty-three Tall Oaks Loop North, here in Harbor Meadows. And my question is, what happens to the C, to this particular piece of property now that it's, you've called for it twice? Is it just tabled, or is it over with, or what?
Well, we would give them till the very end of the meeting and see if someone shows up for it, but if they don't happen to show up tonight, it would be tabled for thirty days, correct?
It'll go to the August meeting.
It'll be held over to the August meeting.
And I know you guys have been notified more than once because they have not had their, all their paperwork together. They finally got it all together to get it on the agenda tonight, but we can't hear it if they're not here to present their case.
Okay, so in other words, we would still have to just wait and see if they're going to show.
Right. And I have a que, this is not the Ricky Hill one, is it?
Yes, it is.
Is this Ricky Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, he was supposed to be in Van Buren at.
And he was on, he was up there.
Yeah, I, we don't know what happened. We know that he had two other meetings tonight at the same time. He was on there for a little bit, and now he's gone, so I don't know if he's going to zoom back in when he gets to another location or not. So we'll wait till the end of the meeting and see if we hear from him.
So we'll just have to be patient, just wait.
You're just seeing all kinds of things that we do here. Yes, you'll just have to be patient.
All right, on to L twenty-17 Lost Margaritas Plaza. This is three, or two variances, one for off-site parking, one for deviation in commercial design, and one for foundation landscaping, as well as a waiver of sidewalk requirements, presented by Morrison Shipley.
Yes, sir.
Or Morrison Shipley, pardon me.
Yes, sir, Patrick Foy with Morrison Shipley Engineers. We're proposing a mixed-use development here. We've received some staff comments. I know that we're working on those and I believe submitted that before this meeting. Mainly here just to answer any questions you guys may have.
Planning?
We have the standard comments of utilities being underground. You're asking for an off-site parking variance, and how many parking spaces are you asking for it to be on the adjacent property?
Proposing seventy-two total spaces.
Okay.
To the east of that building. It's not, it's not, I think right now there's twelve existing.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're on the Zoom, would you please mute your phone? If you would, please mute your phone.
You guys, go ahead and mute it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. So, right now, there is twenty-two existing spaces. We're taking the existing pavement that's on the east side of the building and creating forty-seven We're taking the existing pavement that's on the east side of the building and creating forty-seven spaces, forty-nine spaces, and, in addition to the existing twenty-two. So that's your total, about seventy-two additional spaces on that off-site lot.
And this is that, that's behind the property that has been re, rejuvenated, or?
Directly north of our site, yeah.
Yeah, this used to be the Pat Henry Chevy Yells place, if y'all remember it. Those of you who've been around a long time, that's what it is. Put a lot of work in that building, too, okay? Provides sidewalk improvements along Oak Avenue and Harris Street. You're asking for a waiver of the sidewalk on Harris Street?
Correct, so the east, I believe Oak Street will build that sidewalk. We're requesting a variance from building the sidewalk along Harris. I think that just goes into the back of a warehouse.
It's really kind of an access drive that goes back to that warehouse back there, and so they're asking for the variance not to do the sidewalk on that location. Okay, now, you're doing perimeter landscaping on the east, eastern lot, and I saw in your, you have perimeter landscaping, and you're proposing to do the foundation landscaping with planters?
Planters, yes.
Rather than doing the actual foundation, and you can see where they've included that on there.
Correct.
I think engineering's final comments were determine the outlet location of the box structure, master street plan improvements needed on the abutting streets. I think Oak Street, I think you're doing curb gutter and sidewalks on that and street lights.
Correct.
You're asking that, for all that to be waived on Harris Street, correct?
Uh, my understanding is they're gonna do the curb and gutter on the, the, on Harris, just no sidewalk.
Just not the sidewalk, okay, okay. Crossing under the roadway must use flammable fill, the twenty-eight radius, twenty-eight foot radius required on the entrances, and you need to submit a grading permit application.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? That's all we have. Now, if you can go to the elevations. I think they've done a really great job of, of what the building looks like, you know?
All right, any questions from anyone here in the audience or online? All right, to the committee, this would be a motion.
We need to do the variances, are you gonna do them all together?
That's what I was gonna ask.
They're all together on one form, right?
They're all together on one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Any issue with the committee with doing all the variances at one time?
I have one note.
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna ask, first, I wanted to say that I, I second Patty's thoughts, the bill, I think that the design of the building looks nice. I just wondered if they would be willing to do a, a payment in lieu of, for that, for Harris Street, just to put the sidewalk in. I, I, and the reason I keep thinking about this is because it's not, it's not so much would, will somebody walk down that street, the, the reason that we need sidewalks is for folks who, it's difficult to walk, right? So it's, it's an accessibility issue, so I just, and, and this is kind of gonna be, I don't know how this area will develop, but it is a business district area, it's close to, there's, there's many apartments to the east of this property. It's also relatively close to downtown, so I, instead of just waiving them entirely, the sidewalk in the, on the, on the east side, on Harris, I think I would, I would like to ask them that they would just do a waiver in lieu of, or a payment in lieu of, instead of full waiver.
Any issue with doing a waiver?
You, for my record, this is Willner, by the way, with Bota Architecture, can you, for the record, can you tell me the difference between the waiver on what the gentleman is saying?
You're asking for the requirement to be totally waived, and you have to, and he's asking you to, to make a payment in lieu of, we calculate what the cost of that sidewalk would be. You make that deposit to the city, and the city holds it in an escrow account until the rest of the sidewalk is built, and then we would use that money to build a sidewalk along Harris.
Okay, is that something that needs to be decided today? I, I think we can work together on that, but I just, you know, I don't see any issues, I just don't wanna overspeak on, on that item right now.
The waiver request actually has to go to City Council, so we have until the end of the month to work that out.
The twenty-eighth, yeah, okay.
Okay, so the, the waiver could be with a recommendation to council for payment in lieu of, and we can work that between now and then.
All right.
And I'll just, I'll just say again that I, I know that a lot of times we, you know, we look at, I look at these properties that are out on the outskirts of town, and I, I feel a little bit differently about those. I know how difficult it is to retroactively correct sidewalk issues in parts of town where we've already had development. So that's, that's the only, that's the reason I'm suggesting that.
Okay, very good. We are gonna take any other comments from the committee before we move forward. All right, this will be a motion subject to adding in the payment in lieu of for the sidewalks.
Okay, we, we gotta vote on the variances first.
I'm sorry, I was getting there.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, let's go get to the motions till we get to the.
All right, let's vote on the variances, then, we'll take them all together.
We need to, and that's not the waiver, that's just the variances.
Correct, just the variance for these.
Which is the off-street parking, the deviations in the commercial design standards, in that they're doing pots instead of foundation landscaping, okay?
Yep.
Okay, so we need a call for the vote on that. Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Ms. Mueller.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
All right, the variances passes seven zero. Now we'll move to the waiver. This would be a motion subject to staff comments.
Or subject to.
Or subject to the lieu of.
Uh, yeah. If Peyton wants to make the motion that we recommend a council payment in lieu of improvements for sidewalks. That, is that your motion, Peyton?
That would be my preferred motion.
Okay. We need a second. Second.
Second by Ms. Mueller.
Peters.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
That motion by Mr. Parker passes seven zero.
Now we need the motion for the large-scale approval subject to staff comments.
Motion for a large-scale.
Martian, motion by Dr. Compton.
Second.
Second by Mr. David.
Excuse me, Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Large Scale Development passes seven zero.
And staff will prepare the resolution on the waiver of sidewalks, it'll go to council on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, and I, I just wanna clarify, I think we had the, the Board of Adjustments and the waiver later on the agenda, we just covered everything all at once.
We just took care of all of it at one time, yes.
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Next up is L twenty dash eighteen, Fortieth Street Commercial, variance for deviation of commercial design standards, presented by Bates and Associates.
Yeah, my name is Jake Chanis from Bates and Associates. We're proposing a twelve thousand one hundred square foot retail center with associated drafts and parking. I'm the engineer on the project, so I'm here for any engineering-related questions. For variance, I think the owner is here with architectural questions.
Comments from staff?
Okay, we have the standard comments about utilities underground and addressing other comments by other city departments and utility companies. You show on your landscaping plan some of the existing trees to be saved, but some of those trees you have marked on your landscaping plan are not on your property.
I can read the question.
So that's a question of, you know, you're not providing perimeter landscaping on that site in that you're not, we haven't made arrangements for those off, off-site trees. You need to provide the completion of the dumpster foundation landscaping on the northwestern side, and we need to talk about the materials to be used on the building. Is the architect available to answer questions?
I don't think that Ken is here, Mr. Chris, but this is Jimmy Smythe, the owner, so I'll try to help with all that.
Okay, you show that the exterior material will be prefabricated steel panels?
Well, I, my understanding was that we resubmitted different materials, I see what you have on the screen there, and I actually have different elevations that address some of the previous concerns already. Let me see if, if we, okay, that does look like our revision there. I see the north elevation and the south elevation. But I have from Ken his response to the request where he gives the percentages of materials and what the materials are with our revisions. I'm hoping you do have a copy of that.
Do we have the percentage calculations? Yeah, we don't have that information.
Well, my understanding was it was returned a few weeks ago.
Well, we, we have, we have information that shows that it is metal wall panels from Central Street Manufacturing with different colors. Now, the color drawings that we have, are those the true colors gonna be used?
The color drawings that you showed on your screen there, that is not, no, that is not. That was our, that was previous to the changes that were made before he submitted for the variance application. I thought that, I mean, I have copies out of here with me for the venture.
We have one drawing that shows the center section is, is colored a red color, the rest of it is green, and there's some gray, kind of bluish grays.
And that's not it, actually, no, 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 ma'am, we, well, my understanding was it was submitted with different colors, where that center section is actually a slate blue to better complement, you know, the structures around it, like the Northwest Urgent Care Center.
Okay, because we don't seem to have that information, because the one that, the most recent one we have, and I'll, if, if you can see, I don't know if the camera can get it where you can see what it looks like, it shows that center section to be red and the rest of it to be green. The colors on the chart that was attached to it shows it to be a crimson color and light stone gray, light green, and white.
Well, that was all changed, and the drawings that I have in front of me reflect the change, but I'm not sure why you don't have that.
And then you're using ceramic tile around in some areas?
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna be using tile at the column bases, and then you see the, what's incorrectly shown is crimson red on the drawing on the screen there, the, the base where everything is designated as number eight there, that will be a tile, and that tile is a magistrate stone look medium gray.
I got that one, okay.
Okay.
That one's on this list, on a, well, on the number eights, it shows it as being a dark gray, and then on the number sevens, it shows it to be a medium gray. On the drawing that we have.
Yes, and the drawing I have, seven's a completely different reference, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
But, you know, you, Mr. Chaner copied me on everything that, at least, I feel he believed he resubmitted to your office, but it may not have happened.
Well, this looks like hand-drawn elevations.
I believe what we received was addressing some of the questions we had about the bump outs on the facade, and I think that's all we received. You stated that you have the percentages on the materials in front of you. Could you provide a breakdown of what you have?
Absolutely, sure, let me get back to that page, I've shuffled it here. Okay, so this is calculations by Mr. Chaner. On the, the south, which is the front wall, there's a total surface area of four thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. The glass is storefront and six hundred and fifty square feet of that, which equates to fifteen percent. A fiber cement exterior cladding is one thousand one hundred and seventy square feet, representing twenty-seven percent. The exterior ceramic tile is eight hundred twenty-four square feet, which represents nineteen percent, and the metal wall panels represent one, or one thousand seven hundred and sixteen square feet, for a total of thirty-nine percent of the, the south, or the front facade. And then I can go to the west side.
Okay.
Isn't it?
What's on the west side?
On the west side, which is the street side, we have a total surface area of one thousand six hundred and eighty square feet. Glass on that side is only twenty square feet, so it's one percent. We have a fiber cement exterior cladding is one thousand two hundred and twenty-four square feet, which is equivalent to seventy-three percent, and then the metal wall panels total four hundred and forty-six square feet. That represents twenty-six square feet, or twenty-six percent, I'm sorry, of the street side elevation surface.
Okay, so based on the percentages that you've provided, can you confirm whether or not this building is predominantly prefabricated metal panels?
Yes, Corde.
Well, when you go to the north side, how much of the north side is, is metal panels?
Yes, okay, on the north side, that is currently, well, I say currently, I'm not sure exactly what your drawing that you have there shows, it's not on that particular page, the north isn't, that you have on the screen now. But the north is, is still predominantly metal wall panels, though we did add a couple of parapets there. And so we have two thousand one hundred and ninety square feet of metal wall panels, that's not including the onies. And then we have two hundred and fifty-six square feet of fiber cement exterior cladding, that would be at those raised parapet elevations that we have, but that is ten percent on the north side, which is the back of the building.
So the back of the building is ninety percent metal and ten percent fiber, taking out whatever doors you have there.
Yes, ma'am.
So Patty, I can't speak for the entire commission, I would only tell you that it's very hard to understand what we're looking at on assumptions of, of not having the proper documentation in front of us.
We have a couple of other issues that I need to make sure that they address, is the drainage issues.
Okay.
The drawing that was submitted shows the drainage off-site because there was a lot split done so that the west, the eastern portion of this lot was split off and attached to the one that went to the north, and now there's detention facilities on that lot.
Yes, ma'am, we, we saw those comments, and we, we're, we can move the detention pond slightly.
Okay, so basically, we're talking about a redesign because you're gonna have to move the detention facility. We don't know about the building, and does the parking lot drain to the street? Or is there a drainage swell in that ten-foot distance between the building and the property line on the north side, which also has to have five foot of perimeter landscaping in it, also has, looks like either door pads or for the mechanical equipment that takes up five foot of that space? How are you getting a swell through there with all those things going in, in that location, too? Unless there's some kind of LID or some kind of drainage specific to go in that same ten-foot space?
Talking about this, a swell close to the street from the.
No, the swell on the north side of the building that goes from the detention pond, or which way does the, the water go on the north side of the building? Is it going to the east or to the west? It shows it, it's confusing, let's put it at best, it's confusing.
I believe the water from, from the north side is, is still running to the north. And I'm not, I'm not sure that there's a swell required to the north.
Okay.
Do we still have our engineering?
Katie, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure that we've totally understand how all this is going together, but it needs to have an off-site easement for that detention pond if it's going to serve this site, and then there's also a comment about it needs to be relocated so that the two properties can be connected. We're, we're not sure how the drainage is gonna work on this, is what I'm saying. So if we're fixing to table it because we don't know what the building's gonna look at, the drainage needs to be addressed, too.
Agreed.
Definitely, we talked about relocating the pond due to the property owner's concerns about access to the back parcel anyway, so I think we'll be able to work out that, if, if they still need to move the pond. And then the, you're asking about the parking lot, I believe that drains to the street, and then there is a curb inlet just to the north of the drive, so it would go to the street down the gutter and then right into the storm sewer.
So we, we allow people to drain into the street and let it go down the street to the inlet? Because I thought we always designed so that the water doesn't go into the street, it has to get into the drainage system before it gets to the street. Is that a change in the drainage criteria? Is that a change in the drainage criteria?
No, runoff has to be contained in a drainage structure, so they, if it goes, I'm sorry, yeah, it might, I mean, it's very immediate, but yeah, it does drain into the street right now, as it's shown.
Okay, but what you started to say is everything's supposed to go into a drainage structure before it gets to the street?
Right.
And there's no breaks in the curb to allow it to get to that, except to go down into the street and then run to the drainage structure? So it's got some drainage issues that need to be addressed, too?
So there's an issue there, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I would recommend that we table this until those issues are resolved with engineering, as well as that we able to get accurate elevations to look at.
I'm sorry, we can always, the drainage wires, we can always just put a curb cut there, so it doesn't drain directly into the street.
Well, we can always do that, then how come it wasn't done when it was submitted?
I guess we were unaware of the regulations that it cannot run directly into the street and into the storm drain, but that's pretty typical of other cities.
And I can appreciate that. I would encourage you to visit with our city engineering staff to visit before the August meeting to see what it is that needs to be corrected on this before it's brought back.
Okay, so Roy, are you making a motion to table?
I am, yes, ma'am, I'm making a motion that this be tabled till the next meeting, until the issues can be corrected.
I second that.
All right, are we ready to move on?
We got a vote on your motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Compton?
We're voting on the table?
Yes, we're...
Voting on tabling?
Yes, yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
All right, pass the 7-0 to table it. I would ask Katie, if you would, to touch base with the client to make sure that there's any questions on drainage or what the city's requirements are before resubmitting for the August meeting, please. All right, moving on to Board of Adjustment, B-2026 Mencia Properties.
We already did that one.
Oh, we did Mencia, I'm so sorry. Thank you. B-2027, Maybi and Jorge Yarajeta, variance of a deviation from fence height from three foot to six foot, presented by Maybi Yarajeta.
Yes, hello, my name is Maybi Yarajeta, I live at 1211 Crutcher Street, and we are here requesting for a variance for our fins from three to six, and this is the front of our home, however, is the backyard from our neighbor. And what we are having is that on one side, we have a warehouse, and then on the other side, there's the Crutcher Street Apartments, and we've been having a lot, a lot of activity of people trying to cross through our property to get to the Crutcher Street Apartments, and we would like to really try to discourage that from happening, because it's been happening quite a bit.
Staff comments?
And this is not a front along a street that would create a safety issue for traffic, it really is to create a barrier for people to quit cutting across through there, is really what we're looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, questions from the audience, either here or online? To the committee, this would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Vote Ms. Mueller.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. B-2028, Feliciano and Madine Moran, 1211B Crutcher, variance for a deviation of fence height from three foot to six foot, presented by, that is the exact same name.
Yeah, it's the property just to the north of the one we just did, this is trying to get both of them closed off, basically, yes.
Thank you, yes, that is right, ma'am.
All right, questions from the audience, either here or online? Hearing none, we'll move to the committee, this would be a call for the vote as well.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Peters.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Variance passes 7-0 on that one as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's move on to B-2029, Richard and Janet Harris. This is a variance for deviation of a side setback from 20 foot to 5 foot, presented by Richard or Janet Harris. Hi, if you would, give us your name and address, please.
Janet Harris, and the address we're talking about is 1082 Oak Grove Road in Springdale.
Thank you, you're welcome, if you'd like to, to take your mask off if you want to, it's just a little easier.
Yeah.
There you go. All right, staff comments?
This house has been there how long?
A long time. I honestly don't know how long it's been there, but it's probably been there... Do you remember what year it was built? Forty or 50 years old, yeah.
And it encroaches on the side setback?
Yes, it's because it's agriculture one, and we bought the house and decided to, it was in dire need of repair, and so we actually redid the whole house. I have pictures of what we did. We gutted the entire thing, redid it, and then it didn't have a garage or really even a driveway before, and so we did put a carport, and to be, if you look at that picture, you can see that the house is set way over, and so the carport does, there's a fence, so we thought and didn't, and we had a builder that we were working with, Crane Construction, and they did that, but it, the carport, to put a two-vehicle carport on it, it was going to set over off of the variance, and so we're asking that we can move the variance.
So you're asking, it has a 20-foot side setback because it's zone day one, and you want to reduce it to 15, take that five foot off so that you could have it within 15 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I have pictures, if you want to see.
It's worth noting that the house is closer than 25 feet of the line.
Yeah.
It's, we have a 25-foot setback on a 1/3 acre lot, it's, I don't know where this came from, maybe this piece of land was cut off from someone else, another life, but the entire house is of the line.
Yeah, it was probably built long before it was annexed into the city.
Probably.
Probably, nobody checked it back then when it was built.
We just saw what the fence was, and the carport comes roughly to the fence, so we just thought, it's okay, it's no more structure than what the fence is.
Y'all want to see our pictures?
Anybody want to see them?
You're welcome to hand them to her, and we'll pass them right around, sure.
This is the house before, and this is the house now, and then I did actually take a picture of what it looked like before and what we've done inside this, laying it around, and then just to show you that we actually did do it, the house.
Those are, that are on Zoom, I don't know how we get them to see them, but...
Well, they look very nice. All right, any other staff comments?
No.
Any questions from the audience, either here or online? To the committee, this would be a call for the vote.
I just, so it...
I'm so sorry, go right ahead.
It is a, it's a setback going to 5 feet, right?
Yes.
You're requesting a, yes, I'm sorry, it's a 15-foot variance, it's going to 5.
25, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I will say that the side that it affects the most, the neighbor there, has written a letter to us and to Springdale, and said that she is fine with it, she said it actually adds to the house the way the house looks, it makes the property look better, and so she did write a letter to us and to the city councils, saying that she was in approval of that, and there's really no other neighbors close, because the field across the street is empty, and then you can see on the picture that the other house is set back pretty far off the road.
Any other questions from the committee?
Is there any comment from the fire department?
Ed?
This is Blake Oakes from the fire department.
Blake's there, okay.
Yeah, just, in general, I would make comment that the fire department does not support reduction in setbacks irrespective of...
All right, any other comments or questions?
Kind of lost that one.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he said they do not support side setbacks. All right, this would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Compton?
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
All righty.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Do you want our little green?
Yeah. And you want your pictures back?
I was going to say, did we give them back their pictures?
Oh, you got them, okay.
All right, on to B-20-30, Katie Hill. This is a variance for deviation of side setback from 20 feet to 13 feet by David Hodges.
David Hodges for 3543 East Monitor Road.
Staff comments?
So this was a barn that was constructed on this property?
Approximately 1960-ish.
Okay, and it is within seven feet of the, no?
It's within, it's encroaching six feet, eight inches into the 20-foot setback.
Okay, and it's zone day one, and they're asking a variance to reduce it from 20 to 7. And the barn hasn't been there a long time?
Barn's been there a long time, it's really no longer a barn, it's a shop, and really nicely restored, so it's a nice structure.
And it really needs to be cleared up because it's a cloud on the title?
Right, exactly.
When you try to sell it? That's how we got into this, okay?
Very good. Any questions from anyone either here or online?
I hear what you say, it needs to be cleared up.
It has a cloud on the title because it has an encroachment of a setback, and that's why they're asking for the variance?
To the committee? Should be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Ms. Mueller.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Variance passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Next up on the docket is B-20-32, Buddy and Jamie Philpott. This is a variance for deviation of side setback from... Ladies and gentlemen, just a quick reminder, if you're on Zoom, please mute your phone if you're on Zoom. A variance from eight foot to six and a half foot, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. Yeah, the Philpotts recently purchased this property on Gene, and upon survey, we found that the southwest corner of the house encroaches setback slightly, and the overhang one foot further, which is the request for the one and a half foot variance. I believe the house was built in 1994, and we just want to like the previous clamp title and make sure it's not an issue in the future.
Staff comments? Questions from anyone either here or online? To the committee, should be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Variance passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving to B-20-33, McLeod and Smith LLC.
Now, that was with, we tabled that.
Oh.
That was with the 40th Street commercial.
That was with 40th Street, my apologies. All right, how about B-2034? All right. Joe San-Germit, variance for deviation of commercial design standards architectural features presented by Bates and Associates.
Hi, this is Christian McGuire, the project engineer with Bates and Associates. This is a summer request represented last month, there's been revision to the building, the sizes, the second building, but we needed to apply for the variance request again due to the changes in the buildings. I have Jason Gorme, the applicant, online, and Dave Burris, he can explain more about the architectural content of the buildings.
So you said you're reducing the number of buildings from what was previously approved?
This is Dave speaking. If you'll remember, we were here a couple months ago at the same project, and what happened is the footprints of the buildings have changed significantly enough to have us come back to you again. The, a couple things that have had change, we're still requesting the design standard request, if you will, on the buildings, although we're still using the same tactics that we were before, but because the building footprints were completely different, it required this resubmital. One thing that we did change was a comment earlier on was some variation of roof heights along the long facade of Building 1, in which we tried to accommodate this time, just because we knew it was going to be coming up again. Is this, is there, can I share my screen?
Can he share his screen?
It's okay if not.
I think he's preferring it not.
Can he share his screen? Okay, he said yes.
Are you seeing that?
Well, we're seeing what we were seeing before, we don't know what has changed.
So, in this case, what we did is we tried to do some projections on this main building, which originally, when it was approved, did not have those projections, we were able to give it a little bit of a, just a break in that long facade of that very front building, again, 100% brick along that northern facade of this building, as well as these back buildings here, which face or are visible from the street, we were able to put brick on those that were visible from the street. Again, the same thing that was done before that we saw before, this rainbow Honda area that facade that we're looking at here, we carried that brick all the way down, at least to the front of the building of where the Honda would be, so, again, anything visible then on this main facade would be brick, including that area over there for the Honda area.
Have you submitted that elevation to us?
Yes, all of this has been submitted, and that's what's on all of your color elevations, but the color elevations are for each building with each of those percentages on there, so you don't really see the whole project together with each individual PDF.
Okay, so you made changes along the building, the front building, with the projections on the side. What about the back buildings? What did you do to those?
Well, they should all change footprints, so none of them are the same footprint, which is why we're here with the resubmital to begin with. So before, we had these front parapets with anything facing the street, we're not seeing the street, say, in this rendering here, but the street kind of comes and it turns right here, so at this point, these are some existing residences here who are not facing the street, so we have a primary facade of brick here, a primary facade of brick here, and I believe what we did is on this facade here, because it is street-facing, even though it's full of mostly doors, we went ahead and added some brick lintels and facade, put brick along this facade as well on that northern building number two.
Okay, then the buildings that are behind the houses are all metal buildings with no brick facade on them at all?
That's correct.
Are there more buildings there or less?
There are the same amount of buildings, different sizes. These buildings will not be built in this phase, as I understand it. Right now, we are only building 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 buildings in this phase, so these buildings here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, which is why I'm not showing any parking back here, are going to be done at a later date, as I understand it, with that large scale development, they've got to submit all of it together.
That's what it is?
Comments from the audience either here or online? All right, to the committee. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure. So, I'm reading this correctly. There might be two things going on. Have the plans changed? Is that what I heard?
The plans have changed, the building configurations have changed, and they've changed the elevations too.
And we don't have, and we have, and we don't have that?
Well, we've got the elevation drawings. I don't see a revised large scale. Did we get a actual revised large scale so that drainage and access and all that could be looked at?
Yes, Patsy, I submitted a revised large scale.
But the variance is specifically for the commercial design requirements, right?
Right. That's all they're asking for, is the changes in the commercial design standards, to be the new, what they just went through.
Because the footprints changed.
And I understood it correctly, that has to do with the buildings that do not face the street not having to comply with the facade of the parapets on?
Correct.
And you're saying it's a financial hardship, like to what extent?
I don't know if you could hear them online. The question from the council, from the planning commissioner was, is this a financial hardship, and can you walk us through that?
It's not necessarily a financial hardship. I feel like what we've done is put together a palette that presents a masonry facade, use a kind of variation of roof heights. I think we're trying to embrace kind of the parapet kind of condition on those back buildings, street-facing facades. Yeah, I mean, I don't believe we could try to claim a financial hardship on a new development. I don't know how anybody does. Yes, it costs more money, but so does, so does a building.
I think, I don't think he was claiming that. I think he was just trying to understand the question. I'm not, he just wasn't sure if that's what you said. We were just getting for clarification.
Right.
That's what's there in writing. The language that's used is financial hardship.
Financial hardship, okay. So you're saying it's not a financial hardship?
If that's the example that Christian gave, financial hardship, then it is. I mean, it's a lot of wall surface. Obviously, brick costs more money than metal, but as a designer, I feel like we have used the materials and sprinkled about the materials and have a variation of color and height and differences here that is also pleasing. I don't feel like we're using metal, in this case, to do it, to try to cheapen the product. I feel like we've used it to kind of give a contrast to some materials in some areas. And obviously, with the non-visible facades, not used material, it's not going to be seen.
Did you ask for a phasing plan on the large scale when it was submitted the first time?
A what plan?
A phasing plan.
No, Patsy, a phasing plan was not proposed with the first round, the first middle. It was with this latest middle, though. There was a phase line included in the large scale plan.
Well, I don't see the revised large scale, so I don't know where the phase line was.
If that's not, so that plan has or has not changed, who is it looking at that?
The plan has changed from what we originally approved, yes.
The buildings are all basically in the same place, just the elevations have changed?
There's less buildings, correct?
Same.
Same number of buildings, different configurations.
I guess I'm not trying to be difficult. It's difficult to understand which, what's not going to be facing. I mean, we're being asked to grant a variance, and we can't, it's hard for me to understand what, what's not going to be facing, what is, to know that I'm doing what's being asked.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch any of that.
The question was, the commission is having a hard time understanding exactly what has changed. We do understand the footprint has changed. We do understand what we were just taking through as far as looking at the elevations of the brick. I think the question that we're trying to understand is, one, we don't know if a phasing plan was submitted because we can't, we can't locate one here. The other opportunity is, is there anything from looking at this building from the street backward into the project that is different, substantially different than what was proposed the first time? Or was it simply that the footprint of some of the buildings changed, was triggered to come back to us again?
This is Dave speaking again. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm going to show you a file of what it was, and I'll let you know, it all stemmed from the owner going back and looking at the unit matrix and how many sizes of units he had in various locations. So, this building was much longer originally. These buildings were skinnier, if you will, and what they were needing to do is try to get a variety of plans that were... So I think there's three buildings here, now there's, there's only two, so we could get some storage kind of from the inside, if you will. This building was eliminated. This building was made bigger. So, the footprints just got a lot more, I guess, in-depth when it came to a variety of overall unit plan, which in turn changed every single building footprint, which is why we're here for the revision. Significantly from the original, we still had masonry facade along the south from this point forward, up, around, and down. We did not have any variation. We had brick facades on these facades, and I do believe the original plan had brick on these back-facing buildings that were facing the street here. That brick was eliminated on, which was once, one, two, three, four, five buildings. That one was not. To, basically to one, two, three, four, five buildings, which are still back there, but different sizes.
With no brick?
With no brick along those back buildings, which do not have any street-facing facades.
And is there a reason why we removed brick on those back five, just simply was it because they weren't facing a street?
Just because they weren't facing the street. That's correct.
But that hasn't changed. They weren't facing the street when we approved it the first time, right?
So, if they weren't facing the street the first time, they're not facing the street now. It wasn't a financial hardship before. It doesn't seem to be a financial hardship now. The question still remains, why have we removed the brick?
We can add the brick back in there if it would please the council.
Just from my personal take on, I think the buildings look better if they're all, if they're all one product. So I would prefer the brick on all of them.
We would, we would accept, being able to accept approval by making sure that we add the brick on those one, two, three, four, five buildings in Phase Two.
Well, we have, we have to bring the phasing plan and have it approved. It hasn't been submitted. So we don't have it approved?
I submitted that in this last cycle for approval, and I asked why it was not part of this planning agenda, and I was told because it would be handled administratively. All that needed to be heard today was this variance. Now, I have the plans. I can pull up and share my screen and show the phasing plan, but I did submit the large scale at the appropriate time for review.
Through technical plant review. You submitted it on July the second to go through this technical plant revote?
No, I submitted it to get on this planning commission, so that would have been back in the beginning of June. And I have the plans here to share, to share the phasing line or what else you might like to see right now.
We, since it is being done in a second phase, do we need to, I mean, I kind of, I got to wonder why I was designing buildings that weren't going to be built in this phase anyway?
That weren't going to be built in this phase anyway, or we're not doing it later, but...
We understood that we had to get everything designed.
We understood that we had to get everything designed.
With this LSD?
With this LSD, whether it's being phased out or not.
Well, I don't think there was any discussion at the beginning of this project about it being phased. What we normally look at is to make sure that each of the phases can stand on its own. Does it have all the drainage that it needs for the first phase to stay? If the second never happens, and we didn't make that analysis on the front end.
The second piece of that would be, at least the variance that I'm reading in front of me, is for a deviation of commercial design standards, which is what triggered the conversation about the five buildings and the brick.
Yep.
Is what brought that forward. So Dave, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're okay with putting brick on, back on those five buildings when they are built? Is that correct?
Yes, and I can, I can make that resemital here this week to be able to show the brick on there.
Okay. Any other staff comments?
Okay, the only other thing I can say is, we need to look at the phasing plan, and if there's any problems, it'll have to come in. If it, if everything can function as is without planning commission action to create the phasing plan, if you guys want to give the staff that capability, we can do that.
Guys, I just, I got a receipt. Our owner's online, but he's having some difficulty hearing here. I just said, we're still phasing this one, and he just says, I don't want to phase.
I don't want to phase. So, for me, I don't think you can hear me, can you? Nope. Okay, nope.
You're saying he doesn't want to phase? All of it's going to be built at one time?
All of these are going to be built at one time?
All of these are going to be built at one time, correct, for me?
One phase.
Okay, then that issue goes away. Then, the variance for the deviation of commercial design standards, if we're not taking the brick off the back building, what is the variance now?
Yes, we will be placing brick on, on these back buildings on that, on the western, I'm sorry, the eastern facade.
Does the footprint change, okay, but they're not changing anything other than the footprint?
Okay, so if you're not taking the brick off the back buildings, and you're adding additional brick, you know, the bricks in the parapet that you didn't ask for before, what variance are we asking for now? I'm confused.
See, I don't think it would meet the exact definition of commercial design standards, and the buildings are different than they were in the first one, so I think we need to consider this as a new submission with different materials and a different shape on the buildings.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to.
I'm sorry, why would we need a different shape on the buildings? This is what we submitted for the, I mean, that's why we resubmitted.
But they're different now than they were in the original submission. That's all I'm saying. They're, they look great as they are, but they're different than the original layout.
We have too many sounds.
All right, so Patsy, let me ask this question, based on the fact that the only thing, and Mr. Peter brought this up as well, based on the fact that the only thing that has now truly changed is just simply the footprints of some of the buildings, since they're adding the brick back on, and they're adding the brick in the parapets that they walked us through, is there, is there a variance to vote on? Or is it just simply we're waiting them to resubmit before, before it can go to council?
They're going to have to go to council, and I have, I really can't answer that question because I'm more confused than I was when we started.
Without all of this, I have resubmitted this with the phasing plan, and I was told, since it was already approved as a large scale, I would not have to be heard through the large scale process. The only thing that would have to be heard is this variance from the commercial design standard.
They're all lying.
But we're not phasing, no. Sarah's not here, and Tyler's sitting in for tonight.
Dave, do you know what the percent of the building materials are? Is this, do you have more brick than you have metal, or is it predominantly metal?
Each facade is listed with the percentage on their color elevations here. So, the ones that have masonry on the facade, it's a hundred percent masonry, with some exceptions. I guess, I guess we're looking at that facade right there, but all of those were presented with the updated color elevations. Those did not really change percentages based off of what it was, what was submitted before, with the exception of those five back buildings, which now is going to go back to where it was before.
I think we should consider this.
Submission.
Submission, and we should vote on it, so that we know that this is what we're getting and how it was presented last time. So we had a bit of a, some parapet breaks, this breaks, they weren't there last.
Yeah, I agree.
So we had a group breaks in there that we wanted last time, we're going to resubmit again, and we have to resubmit you again, to talk to you again, that we...
Try to add, try to add some of those in there.
Add some of those in there.
All right, so, Patsy, let's do this. Let's go ahead and vote on what we're looking at tonight, which is the new brick with the new parapets, and the stipulation that they will be adding the brick back on to the five buildings in the back.
Okay.
And that the commission is okay with you doing that administratively, moving forward without it coming back to us so they can move forward to council?
They're going to have to go to council, and there's no phasing. It's going to be all one project.
Okay, very good. I'm assuming that would be a motion?
This would be a motion to approve the variance as submitted with those stipulations you just talked about.
All right, so this will be a motion to approve as this is submitted today with the stipulations we spoke about, which is adding the brick and the parapets that we walked through with Dave, as well as adding brick back to the five buildings in the back part, which may or may not be phased. But that would be what we're voting on. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? All right.
So, we're going to, we're going to let that, everything be taken care of administratively by us?
Yes, sir. Thank you for reminding me of that. We'll also be adding that piece into it as well, to the motion that this would be stipulated upon the administration working with, with the client to work through those issues once we've voted on it. And that would be a motion.
Second.
Motion by me, second by Mr. David.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Okay, before we finish up and folks get off the line, Dave, thank you so much for walking us through that. Is there any questions that are still unanswered for you from our side?
No, we're, we'll get everything up to date and in your hands here this week. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. And that motion passes seven zero. All right, let's move to twenty thirty-five, Larry Gibson from Truett Lane, variance for deviation of fence height from six to fourteen feet, presented by Larry Gibson.
We live at, my family and I live at twenty-six hundred Truett Lane, as you said. We've lived there for just over sixteen years. The property just to the north of us, we owned, we sold it about ten years ago, twelve years ago, maybe. And we knew what the zoning was then. In fact, we came to the planning commission at one time to try and get part of it rezoned and out of A1 to single-family, and then we couldn't work out the details of building a single-family structure on it. But if we'd have ever known what we're in now, we'd have kept the property. We'd have never sold it in the first place, and we'd have, we would have headed off this issue. What's happened over the last couple, two or three months is, is that the owners of the property just to our north have moved in a retired U of A transit bus that's, the property where it sits is a little higher than where our property is, and subsequently, they have a bird's eye view of our, of our, the entire north end of our house, including our pool and our pool house. And we were trying to preserve our privacy by building a screen. We were trying to do it with good taste. Well, I stopped short of asking the city's permission. I guess I'm, I'm in a, in a position to have to ask forgiveness or permission now, I guess, but anyway, we, we started putting some, some poles in the ground in the, in an attempt to gain our, to regain our privacy, and we were stopped at that point, and that's why I'm here now.
Staff comments?
I don't think we have any comments. Is there anything from building inspection or the fire department? I mean, this is not on a street. As you can see, it's set quite a ways off of Chapman. It's a private drive from the corner of your property all the way into your house.
Yes, ma'am.
It would actually be on the
The north.
Property line, north property line.
Northwest side, yes.
Okay, yeah. It doesn't create a sight...
The fire department? No one can see it but us and the people to our north. No one can see it.
I think Blake may have a comment.
No, I was just going to say the fire department has no comment, no.
Oh, okay.
I have no idea what he said.
I'm sorry?
We do?
Yeah, it's upstairs.
All right, no worries. Sorry? I do too.
Any comments from anyone here in the audience who are online? Yes, ma'am, please step up to the podium and tell us your name and address, please.
I'm Alexis Wilks, my address is 3505 1/2 Chapman Avenue, and I'm the property to the north of Larry's here. I only had a couple concerns about the fence. The fence as it's being built is, they're burning treated wood for the planks, and it looks nice, but it smells horrible. And I was hoping to have him burn the planks for the fence on the other side of his property, if that was going to be how he continued to have the fence look, was my main concern. And then I was hoping, because from my side, it blocks the view of the trees quite a bit, I understand wanting to block the bus, but if we're going to put a fence between our properties, I was hoping to maybe have planks on my side so that you can't see the fence posts as well. Standing as tall as it is, it, I feel like, would help it look a lot better from, from our property line.
So you're asking for the structure of the fence to be put on your side, rather than, you know, normally we, we put the fence where the smooth side is to the adjacent property and we put all that other stuff, you're asking for it to be done the other way?
I'm just asking for the fence post to be covered, or if I could have, like, permission to put up my own on the backside of the fence, the fence posts are just really tall and it, it looks a little absurd, honestly.
Okay, I don't know that I understand.
I think she's wanting to, if I'm understanding correctly, and please stop me if I'm incorrect, she's, whatever he puts up, she's wanting to put something of her own up to, so she doesn't have to look at that because...
You can put it on your, as long as you stay on your property, you can put a fence up on your side.
Okay.
I think she needs a variance to go higher than six feet, though.
Right, you'll have to come back and get a variance to do higher than six feet, too.
We're going through the same process he's going through right now.
Right.
Okay. And what about the smell of the...
As far as the smell, I would, I can't give you any counsel on that, I would tell you that maybe visiting with your neighbor and seeing if that isn't something the two of you could work out to...
Okay. See, that's my main concern.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
For the record, we were not scorching treated lumber. The scorching process in and of itself was treating the lumber that was not treated. There would be no reason to scorch and therefore treat lumber that is already treated. So, that was not what we were doing, for the record.
Any other questions from anyone here in the audience or online? All right, to the committee, this would be a call for the vote.
Have a quick question. Larry, is there any way you can plant some trees there and make this a temporary situation instead of permanent?
You know, who was that, who was that?
Ben.
Ben Peters.
Hey, Ben, well, yeah, I guess I could, but it'd take four or five years for them to grow tall enough for them to, for them to accomplish the same screening that we're doing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, can you plant some trees now? We'll let, I would vote for this variance if you would agree to take the fence down when the trees replace the fence.
Are you asking, Ben, for the trees that are installed now to be as tall as what the fence would have been, or are you asking him just to put in trees that would grow over time?
That's what I was going to say, exactly, thank you.
Trees that would grow over time, when the trees got to reach the same obscuring that the fence is providing now, could be five years, could be 10, I don't care, just at some point, this fence would come down and the trees would replace it.
Are we putting a sunset clause on the variance?
I'm asking you if you're willing to consider that.
I'm willing to consider it, yes.
I know it's going to be from the north, you're accurate where it's going to be right, where the yellow line is, where you're trying to consider it.
Yep.
Can you see where the arrow is on there? Right there's where you're putting it?
Yes, yes.
Is that right there, or are you going to go all the way across?
No, no, it's not all the way across, in fact, from the, from the, from the extreme northwest corner, we're probably, what, 15 feet from that corner, well, we're coming down to about 15 feet off the southeast corner. Frankly, we just don't want to see that bus, and we don't want to see their, their barn or their roof. That's all we're trying to, we're trying to screen the unsightly and gain some modicum of privacy back.
So, Ben, are you asking that trees be planted and a fence not be put up, or put a fence up and plant trees, and when the trees grow tall enough, take the fence down?
The second option.
All right, so, so that we're clear, he's asking that if it's passed and you do put the fence up, that you also plant trees, so as they grow tall enough to overtake the fence, then take the fence down. Are you open to that, sir?
Yes, I'm open.
Okay. Any other questions, any from the committee? All right, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Ms. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
All right, variance passes 7-0, for the fence to go from six to 14, and to also plant trees until such time as the trees are tall enough to take the fence down. All right, let's move on to the waivers, W 20-07, this is Burkhardt Construction, a waiver of sidewalk requirements presented by Yvonne Blaylock. Yvonne Blaylock outside by chance, all right, we'll circle back and check on her. W 2009 Edgar Barrios, waiver for sidewalk requirement presented by Edgar Barrios. How are you?
How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Can you reach the mic?
Yes, sir, if you want to, just pull that mic down for him and that will, yes, sir, perfect, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would like to request a sidewalk waiver, because I'm going to start building my house and this, the 21 acre lot, and that's going to be a lot of sidewalk.
Okay, and lastly, if you could just give me your name and address, please.
Edgar Barrios, 8300 West Gibbs Road.
Thank you, sir. Staff comments?
So are you building your house where it will actually face onto?
Gibbs Road.
The full width of that street that's there, that's where you're asking for the variance, or?
I was told that I, that I will need a, on new constructions, I will need a sidewalk.
Just for that frontage on Gibbs Road?
Um...
Ed, do you have some information about this one for us?
This is access off Gibbs Road.
Well, that's what's confusing.
Yeah, it looks like it runs back between those houses, right?
I understand.
Not the access over here on this side?
Yeah.
On the southeast side, where he's going.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we...
There's no other sidewalks along Gibbs, I assume.
No.
Okay.
Really has no frontage on Gibbs Road, around 500, the back of it, or sidewalks.
Okay.
Do we know if there's any plans to improve Gibbs Road and put sidewalks in?
There is a fence on this, the south side.
I don't know of anything, no. I mean, all of those houses that are on the south side that's in that subdivision, they didn't have to put sidewalk on that because they don't access it, you can see where those streets come down and there's a, there's a turnaround there, so that, there's no sidewalk put in with that subdivision on that side. And the mayor just left, but I don't know of any plans to do any improvements to Gibbs Road.
All right. Mr. Barrios, would you be open to doing a payment in lieu of, which means that you would put some money for the sidewalk to the city and the city would hold that, and then at such time that they build a sidewalk there, you would not be responsible at that time, they'd already have your money and, and put that towards the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions from anyone here in the audience or online? All right, to the committee, this would be a call for the vote.
I have a, I have a quick question on this one.
Yes, sir.
So, there are three parcels here, right, that Mr. Barrios owns, is he just building his, his house on the one that's highlighted yellow here?
No, I'm building in the front part of Gibbs.
Oh, you're building it on the front parcel?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay.
So you're building down here in this corner, so you would have that frontage along Gibbs Road?
Right where the 8300 is, right there.
Yeah, right there in the center.
Okay, okay.
Assuming it's going to face Gibbs?
Gibbs, maybe we'll be facing Gibbs.
Okay, so here, so...
How will you access it?
It will be a gate on Gibbs.
Right at the corner of Gibbs and the, and the long driveway coming down the west side?
Right in the middle, on the, on the front parcel.
Okay, in the middle, okay.
You have the permit for this already?
Yes.
I guess we do.
Okay.
All right, any questions from the audience or online to the committee? This would be, so what we're doing is we are, this would be a motion, correct?
Harry, you want to recommend it to council?
I would make a motion to recommend this to council with a payment in lieu of sidewalks by Mr. Barrios, which he's agreed to, that would be my motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. David.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
All right, the waiver passes 7-0, thank you, Mr. Barrios, for your time.
Thank you. The staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the 28th.
Okay.
All right, council has to actually agree, did we skip Katy Hill?
We skipped Katy Hill.
I apologize, I thought we did Katy Hill earlier.
Thank you. There's a waiver.
Thank you. Oh, you know, I thought the same thing, yeah, okay. All right, we'll go back to W 2008 Katy Hill, this is a waiver of sidewalk requirement presented by David Hodges. I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Yep.
Can you give us your name and, yes, or do I?
Dave Hodges, here for 3543 East Monitor Road.
Staff comments?
Okay, you're asked, actually asking for a waiver of the subdivision regulations so that you can split this into two tracks because it's already been split once?
Yes, it was split approximately 19 years and four months ago.
Okay.
So I think if we got another seven months down the road, it wouldn't require this.
The ordinance doesn't say exactly 20 years, but, and then they're asking for the waiver of the subdivision regulations, which would include street improvements and a sidewalk. And you will have three tracks, I mean, two tracks on this?
Two tracks.
And what are the size of those two tracks?
5.7 and 7.7.
Okay. The, the big house that's already there is the first piece that was split off of this track, no, it's the, one down here in the corner.
Yeah.
That's right, I forgot, yeah, it's the one down in the corner. So this is a waiver of subdivision regulations, including the sidewalk.
All right. Any questions from anyone in the audience or online? To the committee, and this would be a motion again, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that I think, again, I think I would push for a payment in lieu of, this is very close to Monitor Elementary, and, you know, if we're going to split this property into potentially three properties, that adds three families, you know, I just, I think I would prefer that, that route as well.
It's two, two properties.
First one's already been done, this is two more, so your, your motion is to recommend this to council with payment in lieu of improvements for sidewalks?
That would be, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second. Can I say something on the sidewalks there?
Yes, sir.
On this, it has a incredible amount of road frontage there, so you would be looking at probably over 1,000 feet of frontage along Monitor Road, so I'm not sure how feasible that would be for the area, I mean, the nearest sidewalk to that area is well over a mile away, right now.
Am I wrong, but that, that section that fronts Monitor is 1,000 feet?
Yeah, well, it's going all the way around the corner, so it goes from that driveway, it's hard to point out there, but that shaded area is only part of the property, it goes all the way around the corner of Monitor Road back to that little corner property there.
Okay.
So what's highlighted is...
It's part of it.
It's part of, so...
Yeah, that, yeah, it's just, yeah.
It goes, it goes all the way down to that Y.
Yeah, so that, the dotted lines are city limits, obviously, but...
So Peyton, based on that information, is it still your motion?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, you're right, I think, yeah, if, I thought that that was about 300 feet right there, but, but I do think that would probably be quite a burden on, on the property owner to go all the way around the corner, given that that intersection someday with Monitor and Mountain, the city might do something with that, yeah, probably less passionate about that now.
All right.
So your motion is to grant the waiver of the sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. David, I believe, seconded it?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Waiver passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the 28th.
All right, let's revisit one last time for Burkhardt Construction, anyone here from, or Yvonne Blaylock here? Not, that will be tabled.
And we're back to the Seventh Day Adventist again.
And we're back to the beginning. Anyone from the Arkansas Conference Association of Seventh Day Adventists here? Fatterfield Land Surveyors, either here or online. All right, we will table that as well.
Sorry, guys, it's tabled again.
That is the last thing I had, Patsy, you want to do the planning director's report?
The council in June approved and ratified the petition for consolidation of the City of Bethel Heights into the City of Springdale, and to call an election, and that election date has been set for August the 11th, they established the, who's going to take care of the election, so it'll be August the 11th. They also approved submission of grant applications to the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission and RDOT for TAP and RTP grants for the Watkins pedestrian bike crossing over I-49, that's being done with bond funds, and to see if we could recoup some of the costs of that. They approved the rezonings for the Griffith on 56th Street from A1 to C2, for Arkansas Grant and Marble on Turner from C2 to I1, for the T L George and Sons on Jean George Boulevard in Sunset from A1 to C5, and for Tanguma on 35, 34 Julio Road from A1 to SF2. The conditional use for the manufactured home at 8930 Cary Road Smith was also approved, and they granted the sidewalk waiver to Cami, Cami Street on Brown, Cami Scott, sorry, on 8780 East Brown Road. And the next work session will be July the 21st at 5:30, and we have been working out at the staff level, the idea of creating an optional form-based code overlay district for areas around the downtown area to allow the property owners to use some of the, use the design standards and building, build two lines and stuff that's in the form-based code in that area around the downtown, so we want to present that to you at that time and talk about that, because we've, we've had interest from some of the developers in that area, would like to do the same kind of things in that area that they're doing in downtown, but because it's not in the form-based code, you, you've got minimum lot sizes, this is just not working for some of that, so we want to present that to you at that time. So, first, Tuesday the 21st at 5:30, we'll probably meet, hopefully we meet upstairs because it's easier to do work sessions up there than it is here. We also have been working with My Sidewalk, which is a platform that allows us to take data from the Census Bureau, and data that we're creating from some of the information we have at the city level to create some graphics and some tables to show types of housing, housing cost, locations of different kinds of housing. It's been...
We've been working on a graph that'll show you where all the automotive services are in town. And it's quite telling when you see all those dots being put on a map. So we'll do some demonstrations of that at the meeting as well. So that basically is all I have.
All right, anything from the committee before we finish up? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.